Okay, good morning. It's nine o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order.
Good morning, sir.
Here.
The Lozier?
Here.
Hail.
Here.
Commissioners may have four.
Commissioner Lozier, please pledge allegiance.
Is that an issue? Do we have any issues today? I actually do want to know if there's been a lot of time talking about that. I understand what they're doing. I've answered some of their things.
Creative work.
I don't think they've proceeded with it.
You're not creative.
I agree. Actually, while the way we've been negotiating, I still want to talk about that. I understand what they're doing. I've answered some of their things.
Creative work.
I don't think they've proceeded with it.
You're not creative.
I agree. Agreed with that. Why?
Repeat it.
But I'd like to see. There's a problem such as small.
You know.
I hadn't seen some of your presentations.
So she actually showed you a graduation where you can work. And that's all right. How would they work on that? Okay, good morning. It's nine o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order.
Good morning, sir.
Thacker?
Here.
The Lozier?
Here.
Hail.
Here.
Commissioners may have four.
Commissioner Lozier, please pledge allegiance.
What do you need this time?
We have no flag.
Chairman, it's upstairs that COVID conference meeting last week. Can we pass on it now?
Julius in the prayer.
Father, we thank you for this day. We hope to be made blessed. We ask that you watch over us this day, Father, and that you would watch over the men and women that serve this congregation for its in Christ the Lord.
Item number five, approve, disapprove the minutes for September the 30th. One per Tuesday.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Item six, is there any new business? Item number seven, announcements. Do you have any announcers, Jordan?
No, sir.
Commissioner Lozier?
No.
Item number eight, unfinished business, discussion possible action regarding planning crew access to Division One courtroom. This item was tabled from September the 16th, September 23rd, and September the 30th. Presiding Judge, one study, started here.
And I've already talked to Commissioner Thacker a little bit about this. I've visited with Mr. Biffy. I apologize that I got the agreement to him late last week. And he was actually Friday when I finally got it to him.
I don't remember either. He was still talking.
We're real close, but in fairness to him, he probably needs a little bit more time to look at it. We had a good discussion. I think we're real close. We're working on getting the things that I think you all need from the crew itself. And so I think what I would respectfully request is that if we could extend this for one more week, hopefully we'd be able to lay this to rest next Monday.
Make the motion table.
I'll see.
Do you have any questions about anything?
Not this one, not that one.
George?
No.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Thank you, gentlemen. May that be.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, you want to stay and do the pledge of allegiance with us?
Yeah, I'll do that. We're gonna do that.
We'll do it right now.
Flag's here now.
Mr. Lozier, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, item number two, discussion possible action regarding contract with P-Cup time for the purchase and installation of Shoretail telephone system at Rogers County election board. This item has been tabled from September 23rd and September 30th.
We did not get the required documentation until Friday. I do have that, and I'm going to give it to Mr. Iske today.
Okay.
I don't mind if you want to hold it a second while we do the rest of the meeting. I'd be glad to take a look at it if that's helpful.
We can come back to item number two toward the end of the meeting. Item number three, reimbursement and resolution 2014-3 to deposit funds of $554.00 into 83 SD 200 for accessories fuel. This item was tabled from September the 30th, 2013.
We had spoke to Mr. Iske because he had questions. He said he's okay with it now. He wants me to check the cost account and see how they go there. He understands now the record keeping and everything.
Okay, so this was on the resolution numbers?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number three.
Sir, do we need to approve a number, a resolution number for that?
2014-3.
That's, excuse me. Didn't see that. Sorry.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Item number four, reimbursement and resolution 2014-3 to deposit funds of $1,269.18 into 81 SD 200 for sheriff fuel. The Lozier, this item was tabled from September the 30th.
This was the same thing on the resolution number. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Okay, item number 10, public hearing with discussion possible action on a request of a preliminary plat approval for I Don't Care subdivision. Applicant, I Don't Care, bar and grill of Oklahoma LLC, current zoning. C5 legal description is reflected in your agenda. The added address is also reflected in your agenda.
Commissioner, this came before the planning commission in last week's meeting. There were a few items that need to be corrected before they came before you. Those items have not been corrected, and the applicant has requested to table this item for one week.
One week and done?
One week.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table item number one for one week.
Thacker?
Aye.
Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried. Table one week.
Item number 11, roads and bridges. Number one, discussion possible action regarding biannual inspection of county road system, bridges in Rogers County District Two, invoice number 66 BI 212. Commissioner Hail?
This is in expressions for the day engineering guys that the Department of Transportation pays for. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Okay, is there anything under item 12?
No, sir.
Item 13, transfer of funds, sheriff salaries 04-110 to 04-250. Vehicle maintenance, $10,000.
That's just to give us a budget piece of the fine line.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Item number 14, utility permits, AT&amp;T, Oklahoma, boring trenching across county highway, local road north, 161st East Avenue and East Marshall, approximately .350 miles south of Pine, and further described as 1,890 feet south of the northeast corner of Section 34, Township 19, North Range, 14 East, Rogers County. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Did you talk about that for some reason?
No. Just here if you have any questions.
Oh, okay.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Item number two, Real Water District, number three, Rogers County, boring, two cross county highway, local road north 40, 94, approximately .375 miles of northeast 480, and further described as 180 feet north of the south quarter corner of Section 4, Township 21, North Range, 15 East, Rogers County. Commissioner Hail?
Larry, is everything in order for the utility permit here?
Yes, this is actually the correction of utility permit. They put the wrong location. I went out and met with Real Water District Three, found out that it was a half mile off by the park, requested that they resubmit, and this is just notification for that it isn't the correct location. This is the correct location reflected in the agenda.
So you're adding a motion this February?
Have we already approved the other one?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Item number three, Oklahoma Natural Gas, boring, two cross county highway, local road east, 525 Road, also known as Collins Road, approximately 2.66 miles west and .72 miles south of State Highway 66 and State Highway 266 junction, further described as 2,640 feet to south and 595 feet east of the northwest corner of Section 33, Township 21, North Range, 15 East. Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner?
Sir?
When you were reading it, I think by error you said south of State Highway 66. It actually says north.
Did I say south?
Yeah, it'd be a genus stance for itself.
It is, it is north. Motion to approve. Did we already go on that?
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
I just see if he's paying attention. Big catch.
Thank you.
Item number 15, claims. Do we have any claims, Madam Parker?
No, you don't.
Item number 16, blanket purchase orders.
Number one only.
One only. Could you read those for a little?
Yes. Rogers County District One, O'Reilly Auto Parts for $350. And Assessor to District Three for fuel, $500. Emergency Management to Comp Data for $300 for fuel. Emergency Management to Froman for fuel, $300. District One to Centox, estimate for weekly uniform rental, $1,300. That's it.
Motion to approve.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Okay, down to item number 19, agenda item number one, update by BKM Incorporated, Flintco, regarding courthouse and E91 Center of Projects. Mr. Kim Reed?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, sir.
911 Center. We are scheduled to punch that out this afternoon. So I think it will be, we've studied it over the last month or two, and it's in great shape, so I don't anticipate anything insignificant, so we should have that ready to go over shortly. We still need to get the gas line hooked up to test the furniture or the furnaces, and we need to get the sewer system adjusted so that we can check plumbing fixtures. Other than that, it's ready to go.
Any questions?
We're waiting on ONG on the gas line.
My understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
Also, we have the bid documents ready for the plasma. So broad cover sheets for y'all to do signature, which you can do at the end of the meeting if you prefer. And I would ask how you'd like to proceed with that. We can either put it out for bid to general contractors, or you can do it under construction management, as you've done the rest of the projects. Questions? Comments?
Well, we did so well in tearing down the courthouse by bidding it, so what would leave us from not doing the same thing? We got a whole lot better price on that, turned it down at $150,000 versus $300,000. So I'd say bid. That's just the third.
Obviously, that as well.
Yes.
One thing I would point out, if you do the work under a general contractor, you're going to give one base price. So you'll need to instruct me on what work, if any, you wish to do, so we carve that out of the bid documents.
I personally like construction management. Mr. Iske, you would?
No. No, I'm just making sure that you and Mr. Reed are on the same page of what he's asking of you. Thoughts? I think construction management, what we've done on the courthouse and the 911 center has worked well. So there are things that I think the county needs to be involved in on that to save money. But we probably need to look at the list, or look at a list, sit down and really figure out exactly what we want to do and go from there.
We can sit down and do that, and we have estimates of cost for each of the items, so we can give you the information and make a decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything from Flintco?
Now, if you're interested in what Kim said, we're basically done at the 911 Center. We have a few outstanding items. We're currently boxing all the documents up. We'll be pulling the trailer out Wednesday and working on commissioning and training.
Questions for Flintco? Okay. Thank you, sir. Item number two, discussion possible action regarding approval, disapproval of resolution accepting for and on behalf of Rogers County, Oklahoma, the beneficial interest in the trust created by the amended trust indenture of Rogers County Enhanced 911 Trust Authority, Resolution 2014-50. Commissioner Lozier?
Janet, do you know what this is?
Yes, this is the Board of County Commissioners accepting the fact that Inola coming on board to the trust indenture.
There's an email to that.
I make motion to approve.
One second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Mr. Chairman, before you go to number three, Mr. Tom will not be here. He is indisposed today. He may have for us to table or consider going for next week.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Do you need to read it?
Item number three, discussion possible action regarding Tom MeShack, MeShack and Associates' GIS pilot study presentation. Motion in a second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier? Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to table one week.
Item number four, discussion possible action regarding to adopt NIM's National Incident Management System as the official incident management system for Rogers County. Director Spohs?
Yes, sir. What the National Incident Management System is, is a FEMA regulated, FEMA requires all organizations that receive basically the SLA grant. There's also other grants involved also down the line that you can receive, but you have to adopt this. We may have done it in the past, but I could find no record of us ever adopting this. So I put this on the agenda. What the National Incident Management System does is puts everybody, all organizations, on the same page when it comes to incident command and incident management, so.
Is there?
No cost.
Is there a certain level of training that has to go on with this?
Yes.
I know some of us, I think all of us probably have at least the minutes. I don't remember.
I'm glad you mentioned that. Can I have copies of those?
Yes, you can.
I will need copy of the.
We've, I think all of us have been to NIM's training. I don't know what, there's quite a few different ones, but.
Oh, yeah, there's hundreds of them.
I've been to three or four different NIM's trainings, so.
Yeah, there's specific training for elected officials and things along those lines, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Item number five, open award bid number 631, reinforced concrete bridge structures, BR number 87, Claremore Lake Causeway. Commissioner Lozier?
I'm just going to open this. I think we've got two bids on this, don't we?
We can.
This is on Bridge 87 on Claremore Lake, over Claremore Lake on the backside, back here on 4180 Road.
Bid number 631, bid sent out six, bid received two, return is undeliverable, zero. First bid is from Apex Precast. Did you bid two different, you bid two different spans?
Yes.
Okay. The total price, $59,800. Second bid is from Arrowhead Precast LLC. $85,960. $85,960. Can we look them over?
I think I can look right quick and make this in order. Need to get this thing going. The delivery dates are the same. Those are the flies. I'm going to go with the low bid. Apex Precast. $59,800.
Lozier, make the motion.
All right, I'll read second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried out and approved.
Okay. Item number six, open award bid number 632, one five-ton split system, R41 with 90% natural gas furnace, one three-ton split system, R41, R41A with 90% natural gas furnace. Bid sent out three, bids received one, zero bids returned as undeliverable. Okay, the company, the bid is Technology International Incorporated.
Okay, for the three-ton unit is $1,945. And the five-ton unit is $2,612. With Ryan Bay's not being here today, he helped me write this bid, and he, I need to let him look at this. He called, he was sick this morning, so make a motion to table this for one week.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to table one week.
Item number seven, open award bid number 633, sheet metal ductwork for three-ton and five-ton feed drink and cooling system. Mr. Lozier?
This is for the TV units.
Bid sent out three, bids received two, bids returned as undeliverable, get a click, zero. First bid, Southern Sheet Metal. Total cost, $3,250. Next bid is from Tulsa Air Specialists. Price for above $3,512.
I'm going to make a motion to table this for one week until Mr. Bay's is back.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
The Lozier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to table one week.
Thanks, sir. Item number eight, resolution for disposing equipment, sheriff, 2008 Crown Vic, unit number 103, serial number is reflected in your agenda, totaled, sold to insurance company. Do you generally have any issue if we do these together? Item number nine, 2006 Crown Vic, unit number 90. Serial number is in your agenda, and it is total. Item number 10, 2009 Chevy pickup unit, number 76, serial number reflected in your agenda. It is also total, total. Item number 12, resolution for disposing equipment, Rogers County Addresser, a 1997 Crown Ford Crown Vic, serial number is in your agenda, sold September 21st, 2013 at McAllister Sale. Item number 13, reimbursement and resolution, no, that's all. Items number eight through 13. Pardon?
Commissioner, did you read number 11?
Number 11.
Did I miss? Oh, I missed number 11. Resolution for disposing equipment, 2005 Dodge Quad Cab Truck, unit number 44. This is to be transferred. Any questions?
John? Go ahead. I was just asking, the total ones, where do they?
Those were previously totaled, and we just assumed in the process that we would
Those were previously totaled and we just assumed in the process that they would have been moved off the main floor, but they would not. So throughout the last year, going through our records, we're just updating our records.
Okay, did all these go to the insurance companies?
Yes.
Okay. Karen? Now it's your turn.
Number twelve, I don't see it right here. It might be here, I gave it, that didn't go to the auction.
No.
It wasn't ready to go.
No.
But we're, we're having.
Yeah, we were still searching for the title.
Okay, that's what we're doing, looking for the title for that.
Yes.
Okay, so that's inaccurate when it says sold September twenty-first.
Yes, it, on the resolution that I filled out, I could, it says to be, you know, disposed of, junked or whatever, I put sold at the auction, I think, there was some confusion there, but it was already sold, so.
We only took the, Kurt hauled down the emergency management car and didn't have the other one hauled, hauled down because we couldn't obtain the title.
That's, that's.
That's out.
Where's the one you're transferring, John?
It's right now it's in District Two.
Where are you gonna, I mean, where's it going?
I believe it's going to District Two for a short time and then going to nine-one address.
Okay, so you're transferring it to District Two?
We're transferring it to us.
That's what I was, I was in impression. You were gonna keep it and fix it for a while, it was making work on the transfer back to her.
Yeah, it has a blown engine and so it's, it's been setting for Shelley to go out to the subdivisions to do the nine-one address and sometimes she has to leave the pavement going to, or there's dirt and gravel and with that car that we were gonna take to the auction, I didn't get taken because it doesn't have a title with it unless to get that truck fixed and put her in a pickup and that's, that's the last I heard of, but I just wanted to make sure that we're still on that page.
Okay, so, okay, so, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, I agree with twelve, if we still got it and it's not going anywhere right now, do we need to?
Here's a resolution we can void it.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, resolution to dispose of it, do we?
Well, we're not disposing, we're transferring it.
Yeah, I filled out the transfer. You're talking about the nine-one-one car? Yes, sir.
The nine-one-one emergency car has already gone, that emergency management car left, the nine-one-one address and couldn't go because we couldn't find the title, so Kurt only hauled one truck, car down there and only one car was sold.
Okay, but this ninety-seven Crown Vic?
Right.
It did go.
No, it did not go, it doesn't have a title.
Okay, so, so we still have the resolution on this? Yeah, it's, the resolution I filled out that day was to, to transfer.
What he's doing is trying to transfer it to me so that I can fix it so it'll be ready for an auction and get her then pickup and return.
Okay, so on number twelve, we're gonna transfer that ninety-seven Crown Vic to District Two, okay, well, it says sold at auction, that's what.
Here's the resolution for that.
Okay, and number eleven is also being transferred to District Two?
Right, he's gotta have it fixed so she can transfer it to Shelley so she has a nine-one-one address and pickup.
Okay.
So does your resolution correctly state what you want it to be?
I don't think so.
Well, no, it doesn't because it says sold, there's a resolution here with a note on it asking to void the one where it says it's sold, there's a new resolution that is asking to be transferred to District Two, but it is not.
On the agenda that way.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda that way.
There was some confusion when we were discussing this.
Thank goodness that's all cleared out now. Okay, we're gonna do this a little bit different. Item number eight, item number eight only, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number nine, only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number ten, only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number eleven, only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number twelve, motion to table for one week and get it corrected on the agenda for anybody next week.
Can I offer something?
You can, you.
Sure. Why don't you just strike it since you're gonna have to rewrite it, since it says sold, strike it and then next week put on your transfer, because when you're tabling it, you're saying, we're gonna bring the same matter back.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Strike number twelve, we'll bring it back next week.
You rescind your motion?
I rescind it.
Rescind.
Scott, have we gone down to the tag agency on the card for lost?
No, sir, we were recording, going through the sheriff's office later this afternoon to see if it might be in there, attached.
You have to make a motion to strike? You really should. Second. You made a motion to strike.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
This one you bring back next week.
These two are the ones you go next week.
This one's the one. Yep, this is the one we transferred.
Yeah, that's, the next one is the one you.
These are four of the ones we transferred.
Okay, okay. Everybody got that? Everybody clear? Got a good deal?
We need thirteen, fourteen again.
Well, I don't know if I wanna do that. Item number thirteen and fourteen, we'll do those together, reimbursement, resolution twenty-fourteen dash forty-eight to deposit funds, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, eighty-three cents into eighty-two S T two hundred for the town of Tallala, District Two. Number fourteen, reimbursement and resolution twenty-fourteen dash forty-nine to deposit funds of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five into eighty-two S T two hundred for the town of Ulgah. Commissioner Hail?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay.
Only thirteen or fourteen.
Item number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding twenty thirteen, fourteen, general fund budget estimate of needs, Mr. Bill Turner.
Bring it to date where we're at finally. You know, a couple weeks ago, we talked about the general fund portion, the first day approved that, went into one cent and we ran into problems with the clerk and the treasurer's office not agreeing with what our corporation should be, so we resolved that issue, we had some things that finally got resolved like Friday afternoon, but we were there. Some of the issues were, we had treasurer's office putting some money into one cent that other places and it all worked out, so now we're, one cent's fine. Now we're moving on to the highway situation, I'm the same situation there with the treasurer and clerk's office aren't, don't have the same information, we gotta figure out what that is, I wanted to be here today to get that done and then we'll be finished up with this on my hold. So if that works out today, then we'll have it next Monday at noon.
Any questions or comments, everybody?
Good job.
Okay, we're getting them.
Thank you. Make a motion to table that for one week. We need to do that.
I'll say.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and tabled one week.
Okay. Item number sixteen, the discussion of possible actions should enter executive session per percent of home statutes, twenty-five, section three oh seven, D four, for the purpose of confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action, if the public body with the advice of its attorney, attorney determines that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest due with Rogers County case, number C J two thousand and six dash six eighty-four, Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. Mr. Iskey, do you recommend that we go into executive session for this?
I do so recommend.
Okay, I'll make a motion to enter executive session at nine thirty-nine A M.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to enter executive session.
This is the election board's contract, not there at the beginning of the agenda.
Are you back to service or you got to get your master?
I love you, Rob.
You're my friend, but she's, she said buddy.
I know. I love her, but they tell me extra too.
I watch Purdon on my face.
Okay, item number seventeen, to make a motion to adjourn executive session and re-enter regular session, ten oh nine.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to adjourn executive session and re-enter regular session.
Item number eighteen, discussion possible action regarding executive session, item Rogers County case, number C J two thousand and six sixty-four, Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County versus John Stevens, John Stephen Jennings. Okay, executive session, we have discussed a settlement, they have asked for mediation, so we, if the board approves, I'll go and mediate this case.
I'll make a motion to let Commissioner Thacker mediate this, this case, it is against District, the full settlement authority. Oh, we will pay half the cost of mediation.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay. Item number twenty, announcements from county, about county events and status updates for comments, nine-one-one administrator, Director Hail.
A lot of things are going on with the nine-one-one center, the tower will be installed, erected on Thursday and Friday, furniture, the dispatcher furniture will be delivered and installed October the twenty-first, the nine-one-one phone equipment will be installed later that very same week, October the twenty-first. Right now the dispatchers are undergoing protocol training and if you remember, protocols is for fire, law enforcement, and EMS. All throughout this week, I have various conferences, conference calls and meetings and some training going on and on top of that, Saturday, we do have a public education opportunity with the Vertigris Fire Department and I do have some training desk from my previous employment that we will be presenting and that's it.
Any questions for?
Who's all in now that we have Inola, you have Vertigris Fire, Vertigris Police?
Every, in the trust authority or in the dispatch center, everybody's in the trust authority except for the town of Vertigris and that's just timing, we'll get them as well. We will approach them, we've already approached them and we'll get them to sign the documents just like we did with the town of Inola and we have to go through the very same steps that we did with the town of Inola because it is after the fact, so all of the communities, town councils have to be in approved or in agreement, two-thirds of the board have to be in agreement and then we have to present back to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Director. Hey, real quick, let's go back to item number eight, unfinished business, item number two, discussion possible action regarding contract with pickup time for purchase and installation of Shoretail telephone system at Rogers County Election Board, we passed over this item a few minutes ago and Mr. Iskey has had a chance to review it for legal content and Mr. Iskey has signed. Gentlemen? Want your pleasure on this one?
Wouldn't we vote to table that?
No, we didn't vote, we passed by.
Okay, okay.
Come at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
They just put a little letter in here, talking about the documentation, some independent contractor agreement. Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. We have a second.
Where's this money coming from, Billy?
We have it in our budget.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, I'll go back to comments, B, assessment, building operations and maintenance, who's out today, County Clerk.
Um, next Monday is Columbus Day, so all county offices will be closed, and we will be having our regular Board of County Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, the fifteenth. So, all agenda items still need to be in on Thursday at twelve, the usual time.
There will be changes there. Thank you. Court clerk?
Nothing.
Oh, there she is. Okay, nothing. District attorney's office?
Nothing.
Election Board?
We have an election going on, early voting today for the ShoreTel Macy's schools and for the Cardinal Schools. Uh, the election will be Tuesday. And just FYI, as starting November, there is a new, uh, early voting will be on Thursdays and Fridays, no longer on Mondays. So, please, you know, make a note of that, because I know a lot of you come over early.
That starts November this year?
Yes, November of this year, that begins. So, you will only be able to early vote on Thursdays and Fridays, uh, this next election coming in November.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, we're working with the, uh, we're verifying signatures right now for the graduate petition. We're almost done with those.
Okay. Human resources. Thank you.
Emergency management.
What? Emergency management.
I don't think you're really making out. Um, been working on the SLA grant closeout with Oklahoma Emergency Management, Chuck Kearns. I do need, I will be sending out requests via email, DM certificates from anybody, FEMA, any documents that anybody that works in the county may have that are classes that they've taken in. Might get copies of those certificates, that I can start, uh, little documentation, we almost got what? And try to figure out where we're at with that. The state is being a little lenient on us, uh, because they understand that we're trying to build this system, and they're working with me real well. But for this, these, these are old regulations, but with, uh, you know, they're under stronger enforcement these days, so they're really pushing us to get this stuff done. That's all I know.
Okay. HR?
Um, just a little bit of fun news. OU, sorry, contacted us, and they're giving us discount tickets to their Iowa State game. Um, I'll give more information out via email for that. It's just for public employees, they provide tickets at a discounted rate. And also, the Tulsa Oilers, uh, have contacted us, and they're giving us discounted rates in January. I'll get more information when it's ready.
Okay, thank you. Uh, IP? Planning Commission?
Good morning. Um, just to give you an update, I was out last week attending conferences. The American Planning Association Federal Policy Conference went extremely well. Uh, there were many sessions that I think have been rolled into the county, uh, some SCOTUS cases, which I'll be talking to the district attorney about, uh, and additional planning items that went extremely well. The Oklahoma chapter of the American Planning Association Conference was nice week as well. Uh, attended that, and it was very good conference. Planning Commission met last week on October the first. The, there were two options that were on the agenda, plaid and subdivision regulations. Commissioner Halem had requested that those be put on the agenda for review. Kellogg did not show up to represent those items, but did submit, uh, Matt Greber did submit those to our office for review, so there is progress on the subdivision regulations. And I would like to just commend our office, uh, Planning Commission Office on the statement of the process. Wonderful work that they did while I was away.
Okay, very good, thank you. Judicial? O U S U extension?
I'm just filling in for Donna, who is on the committee to select, uh, an executive director for the F H development program at O U. So, I will tell you that on October the nineteenth, on Saturday, the Master Gardeners will be having a fall expo that will be held at the county building, not at the expo building, but at the county building in the parking lot and inside. I'll be teaching a class on safe food preservation at home. And we'll be starting a brown bag cafe, and the cafe stands for Ketcha Fast Education. It's sort of like a lunch and learn program at noon, starting on November the first, and we'll talk about salsa. And then on December the sixth, we'll talk about, uh, the smoothies for breakfast.
All right.
Are you gonna send those out?
Oh.
Uh, I think you will.
Um, would you give your name and everything for reference?
I'm sorry, I'm Jess.
If we don't know you, we do that.
Jess Crainer, C L R N O R.
Thank you.
I'm a family and consumer science educator.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff's office? Treasurer? Okay. Um, we have no idea. Twenty-one. Item two, public comments and responses for board members. Miss Wilk.
Yes, I have a question about the budget. Um, Mr. Turner talked about, I don't know if you want to call it discrepancy, or could you kind of explain what he was talking about with the, the treasurer's numbers not matching the court, the county clerk's? I'm sorry.
They just did, did not reconcile, so, that, you know, it couldn't have been, it could have been pennies for all I know. He goes and makes sure that the treasurer's numbers and the clerk's numbers are the same, you know, and you may be able to explain.
It was from last fiscal year, it's not.
It's not this, this fiscal year?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so he, just to clarify, so he was verifying that last fiscal year's numbers match at the end of the year? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? And that was for the general fund, and then he said there was an issue with one cent? I mean, can you explain that a little more? He shouldn't give us a lot of information, so I'm not really sure, you know, what's going on there.
Well, I think he's making sure that, um, those numbers, as he said, they reconcile with each other, because if one's off, then it's gonna mess up the budget, even, even if it's a small amount. So, um, and I don't know, I haven't been, I mean, I got the information that you got, actually.
Okay, okay. And I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the discounted tickets, um, how much, do you guys know how much the tickets will be? And if the discount exceeds the twenty-five dollar gifting limit that's under the statute, would that be a violation of policy?
I didn't even know anything about it until, until right now. I mean, and that. I'm looking right at you.
I, I know nothing about it till a few months ago.
Yeah. So, I, I can't answer it. I want to be gentlemen, more.
I, I don't know, I'm just, I heard.
The county wouldn't be giving any gifts or expending any money, it's just a discount that they give to public employees that I'm making sure all of our public employees know about.
I'm just asking, I don't know what the discount is, landing tickets are quite pricey, so.
Okay. Does you have any more?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else, fellow comments? Okay. All right. Um, item number twenty-three, payment of purchase source from all departments.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, what's it actually?
I don't have a contract. I found. He had the. I told him you had it. Who is that? Is that the? Is this the election board? Well. I, I'm pretty sure the language in Canada that says it takes place on the execution of all the parts. I think that's probably the thing he signed, but I don't know very well. You know, says it takes, that's the part that says.
Outstanding. Outstanding.
He's off tomorrow. Why's you?
Thanks. See ya. Have a good week. You too.
You know, how you, when you're about to shut in your business? I would never recommend, ever. I mean, that's, you know, all your business, but I just don't think that's ever wise.
I agree with you, sir.
And that's, um, your procedure in the past, before the. Okay, I'll be in my, uh, I'll buy a pair of you. This is the jam up right here. They complain about orders there. Apparently. Somewhere between here and here. We always have the wood because. Chairman, he's on the talk. A lot of things are one, two, three, so always have. Does it have coffee? Sometimes we just have.
Yes, I have to go back and, would you ask, I have to.
Kind of like a bottle or something. Sort of skippin' things. I wouldn't know. It's just my eyesight that's going.
Well, how's your technology center doing?
Whatever you want.
Oh, yeah. Goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Okay. Okay. Is this?
Is that clear? That's right. And that's. Right? So, wait up.
Shut up.
That's, that's the way I understand it. And then if, if that's wrong.
Oh, yeah.
You get four bills? She got a number over there? Yourself? No, we're gonna have somebody can say the word.
No. No. Yeah. And, uh, I'm trying for what it. Which flash? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Let me just watch. Sure. It slows me down. It's not together. What is it? Thank you for the regulations, I saw. Uh, you know, I don't know that we thank you. So, let me pay. Yeah, we thank you too, we pay. It's all about the right. Cause I'm, I know how, how you catch. You know how it is. He is, he's, he's struggling. It's like, it's like bad turn right now. No more look, I gotta turn away. Turn. Nope. I'm gonna do it. Not gonna do it. Thumbs up, let's do this. Leave it up. No, I'm not. No, not gonna do it. Because at this point, it doesn't matter. Okay. Nope. It doesn't matter at this point. You don't have a thought, we do it. Nothing good. All good. That breath. Yeah.
And someone.
What about it?
He's a treacherous talker.
Oh, yeah. We did a call for breakfast. It'll turn. Uh-oh, not march. I can't be laughing now. I'm not laughing with you, I'm laughing directly at you.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
Bois is.
Should come up, come in, log or anything else, road this weekend, our win.
I think we're on this. I think you just call me the name of the school when I teach this. And it's one.
You know what's funny? Not all the time.
I've never read.
These trees, these trees never seem to blow down very good.
You know, it, it absolutely is.
It's always in the middle of the night. That's because about midnight hour, you don't let it light. You can pay extra for that. Yeah, yeah. Going out?
Yeah, this is never, never. Best tree would fall.
No, it's always, it's always the county tree where it falls. But now if it falls out on the road, it won't be properly. Oh, no, here's my favorite. This is definitely the county. We got a tree in the road and, and Dampy's family. We've got a tree in the road. It's a tree they could move. Yeah. That may run. We get it all the time.
I got them. One time, this has been, oh, five years. Three o'clock in the morning, chair's off the wheels. Says you got a pile of dirt in the road. Somebody lost another duck or something. I should be down there. Seventeen miles now, two hours now. I got down there. It was somebody apparently, but I couldn't tell, they'd known to pick up four grass clippings. It was a pile of grass clippings. In about thirty seconds, I kicked it off the road and left. Pile of dirt.
Hey, some new cars would go fast.
Thirty-four miles at three o'clock in the morning. Who do they think they're there?
Riding my bike.
They were there.
Four of them. It was suicide, four of them. Came from the courthouse, took all the way across.
Really?
Ninety miles an hour. Is that right in my back? Everybody coming? When they flew around me, I could smell that exhaust right up there.
Bicycle.
I just felt like, no, bike. It's a bike.
Make you wonder sometimes.
We see Mike by the sweat stain on the road.
What is this? This is work, why am I at all? I'm outside the door. Outside the door.
They're rather, we're rather white today.
No, but there's nothing on this one. Change it, paper.
Same thing as this.
I think she ran out of paper and held it in, but she used it for that one P.O. We just wanted to say that.
You know, I love, I love sticky notes. I love that. No sticky notes? Get them all done.
First one, I just would say, really, he knows compensation.
It's, it's a problem. Okay, have a good week. Tell your kids I said hi.
I don't like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make it back in.
I, I've come to the gathering, that's. One, there was one class that I'm having at the union and they contacted me one week, it comes to their reunion. And I, I, it's a really old class. So I don't know, they, they always have their union dinner out there. Oh, so I'm like, no, I didn't know. I think I'll just go.
Well, that might work.
I hope they do too. You know, here's the thing. Here's the thing about it. It's all mathematics. And it doesn't matter. It's all mathematics. It's an equation, I'm gonna help it too.
All right, that's that little girl. Oh, Lord. They're gonna put that hat on. That is cute, look, they have little brains on. Mercy, mercy. I gotta look for that, that constable.
Hey, get all three of them.
I had one scary. They have it. We made ones of the, um, separate foods. In the blood of all the families.
Right, you got a cocktail, but you couldn't drink it.
It's, it's a coffee shop. It's a coffee house. Is it in my corner? Yep. Sixty. And then here, yeah, I'm a neighbor, walking in my inventory and going through them all and out for it. But anyway, uh, Gary, here we go. I don't know if this is a center group, because this is your welcome. I bet there's someone still going to the house, and this is a whole lot of. Oh, this is, this is a. No, this, this is small. And I think, and I think, I think it's a little bit big. I don't think that it's all. I don't, it's, I, I. Yeah, no, I think, I think this is sort of a big one.
Selisha?
What that next is called?
Were you aware that the progress subscription rate has gone down thirty, approximately thirty percent in the last year? Have you heard that?
I haven't heard that, I'm curious where you got your numbers from.
Well, it's not public record, because it wasn't a public official number. That's what they told me. They said thirty percent, and I thought, we're doing everything we can do to help you self-finance.
Probably more people reading it online.
Okay, you got information now.
Don't they have to, uh, get a subscription?
Kurt, we told you that the numbers have gone up thirty percent?
I've had some people tell me that. Thirty percent? But I would have thought that it would have went up, honestly.
I don't know.
I was seriously, you think?
But I can find out, I can probably.
Would you, would you clarify that for me? Because I just don't believe it. I do not believe it went down thirty percent. Read the water. The paper? I read, I read all the papers.
Oh, why don't we tell her, sure. I always put that in my calendar. Look, I put that meeting in my calendar and on that bag, it shows it down. I always put it in so I don't forget. Uh, is it Tuesday, did we go?
Yeah, next Tuesday, yeah.
Tell, one of those, tell them they should bring you back.
That's what they cost them. G O?
Yeah. We're telling them to bring you out.
G brain. I've never seen, I've never seen.
No, we have to, you're mistaken. It's something we don't have on our end.
This one, this one gets here, but I need my copy of this.
Please, 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 we didn't order them, what do you mean now? Okay, hook up Miles and her dog.
I just looked through them, they were here. So when I'm.
Can I go there now?
No, this was on the, this was on the back.
Oh, seven G.
His name is Blue.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, I just was asking.
Captain Delaware, is that in Carson?
Oh, is this Darwin? I, I just want, I just know that.
Doesn't matter what happens, it doesn't matter.
I probably need to. I hear the phone. Now I can't hear it. My voice got on my, it's gotta be screwed up, because it's not loud anymore. I hear it.
Jerry, that was a little Jerry.
I wonder if I got the short shorts.
Oh, man.
When they got those bike shorts, they had the little pad.
Spandex. They are getting close.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Team effort, my friend. Team effort.
The end is near.
Julie knows that too. Julie knows that, Eddie.
Knows what? Team effort. Yep. I have to play it hard.
She already did.
It's time, it's time, you see a contract.
It's just water.
Are you putting the black on these?
Okay.
You also have to separate.
Easy, easy. I'm like, I'm like so well, nice.
Well, I can take just a second now. One thing, we're gonna get one one four three percent on our money. But I would tend to charge you five percent for administrative, so, yeah. Administrative, and three point five percent more. That would be.
Rogers close.
Yeah, three, yeah.
Now, are you still in time?
The authority should have been all prepared for you. So, there's no advantage there. Now, I thought we'd talk about.
Those three that you gotta send back there.
Where dollars are gonna be, they're gonna be a deal. And ask you out.
Charity.
I'm gonna have fun, I'm gonna travel. We can play, per Peter.
There's more here. What was wrong with this?
I'm trying to get.
Cisco, he goes.
Yeah, I love Cisco.
Yeah, I love Cisco. This was, oh, okay, here it is.
Hey, this was, um, I know I was sitting on my.
I don't know.
He probably laid it down. Okay, pizza, thank you.
It's a long way.
You're not sitting in the stand.
Neither is this one.
Like, some of those are attachment. Oh, listen, you. I, I mean, I'll do this.
Oh, thanks.
And you, and if we say that.
Oh.
Two, three, thirteen. Because that is.
That's easy.
The Kirk's orders down there, I'm gonna finish looking at them. Do you mind if I?
What about this? She walked on the wave. Apparently she's waving. Soon as I waved, she quit waving.
Yes.
So he got there with his stand.
Yeah, why not? Yeah.
Hold, hold back in there. Here we go. Here we go. You got your recording. Okay, can we have a motion to pay purchase orders from all departments? I'll make the motion with the exceptions. Purchase order number zero zero two eight three seven. Purchase order number zero zero two eight three six. Purchase order number zero zero two seven nine two. Purchase order number three zero six nine three zero. Purchase order, well, on this one, did you notice something? Was the motion to pay.
Just the, just the eight hundred. And have him come in and explain.
Okay, let's, let's do this then. Make a motion to pay purchase orders from all departments with those exceptions. And zero zero one zero eight eight. For further review after this.
Zero zero one zero zero eight eight?
Zero zero one zero eight eight.
And on the, on that one P.O., uh, shares department?
Which one?
Right back.
The big one?
Time to time, elected officials do make mistakes, but it needs to be a letter from the elected official, not a subordinate.
Thacker?
Aye.
Hello, sir? Hale?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Hey, on zero zero one zero eight eight. You'll make a motion with that. You did it all right, didn't you?
We're gonna pay just eight hundred, that's what we agreed to. And for them to come in and explain the extra.
Yes, too.
Who made the motion? Hale to Thacker. Thacker?
Aye.
Hello, sir?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye, yeah.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Motion taken. Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Motion?
Aye.
Hale? Motion to pass to the gentleman.
Eleven sixteen A.M.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Here are those. Pardon?
Have a good day.
You have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Or you can, if you want to.
Robin?
Yes?
This is our.
Yeah, it's on the floor.
I'll be right back.
I wonder how cool it is up there, Linda?
Huh?
I wonder how cool it is.
Well, they said, I think it's supposed to get to about sixty-four today. So it's, you know, I like to have a jacket on at sixty-four.
No kidding. It's always, it's always safe to have a jacket handy.
I know it, because you can always take it off, but if you don't have it. Well, I don't know what.
I bet you wanted to win anything. Arkansas win this weekend? Really?